Okay, we're ready to go. This is Commissioner Bill Canada. It is Friday, April 16th, 2021. And I would like to call a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order at 1:30. Close your cell phones if you've got them. Don't smoke them if you've got them. And I better do the same thing here. Okay, let's have the Fledge of Allegiance. And Brayden, how about you for the first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brayden. All right, how about my rule call, Kelly?
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Flower.
Present.
Mr. Day.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Campbell.
Exactly. We got everybody here. Thank you. Audience introductions, and we'll start with Ann.
Yeah, I'm bored.
And where you're from?
Rural Colorado.
And make sure.
Kayla Day-Watmore.
Brayden.
Brayden Wilson, Director of Finance and HR, Silver Creek.
Vernon Ross, Westwood.
Okay, and we've got Jordan Benson running the 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 meeting today with all the electronics. Thank you, Jordan. And I don't think we have anybody online. Doesn't look like it. One person, okay. And if that person has a question and wants to speak up, we reduce that person at that time. Mend the agenda. Is there anything we want to mend? Tom, you got me in?
Oh, no, I'll bring it up.
Something's that?
Later on, yes. I don't think it's worthy of amending the agenda.
Okay. Kevin?
Uh, no amendments, no.
All right, we don't have any old business. This is a special meeting to accommodate time crunch on two items. Uh, and that would be consideration of hiring our HR Finance Assistant Director and consideration of where we are with the Justice Poll. Justice Center polling process. Uh, and so with that, we can get to business unless you want to, do you want to bring up something at the end of the meeting?
Uh, I do. I'd like a comment here as well, though, if I may.
Oh, I was going to do that first, of course.
Thank you. Um, I would recommend to the board that we make reference to the applicant as applicant number one till the decision's been made.
Yes, that's a good plan. Thanks. Any other comments?
Uh, just that truly it is an applicant number one because I think we all three received an application because of the resume.
All right. Any other comments, Kevin, from you?
No, I have something for at the end of the meeting as well.
Okay, then.
Depending on how you want to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't we? I think we need a motion.
I would think that's probably appropriate, whether we want to have a discussion before or after.
Yeah.
Either one's acceptable, but yeah, so.
All right, let's, I'd like a motion.
I would move that we proceed with hiring applicant number one as Assistant HR Finance Director as per say that as per as was presented to this applicant.
Okay, you got a second?
Uh, I want to second that, but I'm not sure what you mean with your motion because I don't know what was presented to the applicant. So I'm in the dark.
Okay, I will just, I will amend my
Restate.
Motion and I would restate it. I move that we hire applicant number one at uh, the mid-range of the posted offering, which would be forty thousand a year.
I'll second that.
All right, so they're moving to second to accept applicant number one, hire applicant number one at forty thousand, which is mid-range uh, on the offer as HR Finance Assistant Director. Any discussions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and I'm sure this is on me. I did not go back and look at the vacancy announcement or our original discussions, therefore I'm a little fuzzy on what the stated salary range was. Apparently I have a different thought than what's maybe fact.
I think it was thirty-five to forty-five, I believe.
Yeah, yes, sir.
That was what was advertised initially.
Thirty-five, forty-five.
Initially.
I mean, when, when we put up, when we rewrote the application, and I think it was the same thing that we had prior when we had HR Finance and an Assistant Director, I think, if I recollect right, but I do know that was the range that they came up with.
And we knew this was on the original posting.
Yeah.
That range, yeah. I I was pretty sure that the two salary ranges were forty-five to fifty-five and fifty-five to sixty.
That's when we had two separate positions.
Right.
Go ahead, Vernon, clarify.
Yes, sir. The, the original, when, when the posting was divided up into HR and HR payable and finance accounts payable, it was set up as being forty-five to fifty-five um, for each, for each salary. When the posting for an Assistant HR Finance Director was made in the past, it's, it was between thirty-five and forty-five thousand.
Okay, I guess I don't know what you mean by in the past. This is the first I've heard of it.
That's what Donna initially asked for Assistant, which she, they wrote up. We have an Assistant at that range, I believe, is what was posted.
Yeah, that was, that was the posting and I, it's in the uh, it's in the job posting, which I pulled from the, pulled from archive files and sent it out to her.
And so I'm assuming we have not published the most recent vacancy announcement. Is that true?
We did not publish it, no.
Okay, and is this thirty-five to forty-five salary in that vacancy announcement or no?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what we had in past that was renewed when they redid it and included the, made sure that cross-training was in.
And they sent us a copy of that vacancy announcement the other day. Yeah. Yeah.
Both the vacancy announcement and the job description.
They went together, right? They were.
Actually, they were two different units, but yes, they were, they went, they went pretty closely together.
And we can talk the salary. I mean, that's, that's a part of the discussion. So right now, the motion was for forty thousand mid-range.
And apparently there's already been a discussion about that, correct?
Not all I know is what they posted, and then I think when they, when they discussed it, that was what they wanted to present. So I don't know any more than that. Vernon, you might clarify then.
Um, as, yes, as per, per the different discussions that occurred, that was the, that was the range that we, that we settled on.
They had their internal. Brayden, you got anything? Dan?
I don't think so, this one.
Okay. Other comments? Ken?
Um, I would probably speak to some of the confusion that we are probably experiencing at this time because there had been when I met with Vernon to go over the job posting, we had discussed an applicant that was interested in the job that was already a county employee. And I had voiced that I would not have a problem with this applicant coming on board over here. We had had that discussion. Speaking not as a board, but as a commissioner, just as myself. And we had probably a lack of communication all the way around as far as there was an offer made through the HR Finance Office to this individual. And that was the range, that was the wage that was offered to this individual. And that was under the understanding that from our past history and that the directors were able to offer this. And at this point now, we're clarifying the things or I guess going back as a board and doing this rather than that at this point, until we get everything cleared up here.
Yeah, my comment would be, yeah, it was necessary. Uh, it is a board action for sure. We agreed on that the other day. So I'm glad that was clarified. And the only, the reason we're doing it now is a special meeting is because of the timeliness of of trying to get it done before, as the training begins for the new conversion and get both our director and the Assistant Director working together to help do that, as well as I think we're going to be running two systems at the same time, right? We're going to have the old one and the new one as it's converting. So it's important to to get going. And that's why we all agreed to have a special meeting. Any other comments?
Uh, I do, sir. So thank you. So I'm looking at your email, Vernon dated April fourteenth. One of them is the vacancy posting. Sorry, I just lost them. Um, and I do not see anything in there about pay. The sentence says for a rate of pay and additional information, please see the complete job description found here, underlined, which obviously was a link, right?
Right. The next, the previous email has the complete job description.
Yeah. And so then I'm looking at the HR Finance Assistant Job Description. And I did not see a salary in that document. I may have, of course, I missed it. Clear at the bottom. I quit at the performance reviews. There was another page. So so my question is this, I take exception. I don't think we've decided anything about this position as a board.
That's fine.
And with the exception of we voted to get a vacancy announcement written and posted, correct?
We should be, and at the same time, we said we needed to, to be aboard to make the decision.
Uh, disagree with you there, sir. I don't, I've never had that conversation.
Yeah, I know. That's not what I'm saying. It was an action that we wanted to get people to apply for so we could consider them because it wasn't a case of of, it, that's a, a simple case of transferring somebody internally. And that's what we, I said.
And I guess the reason I.
And that's why I agreed that we needed to talk now. If we're going to consider an applicant, which we do have an applicant to consider.
The reason I bring this up is because I don't, and trust me, I'm not happy about this. I'm mad at myself more than anybody. I don't think we ever truly said who was going to do this hiring. I always believed we would do it because we were posting the vacancy announcement. I think that's what undermined these two gentlemen. I don't think we ever voted that we were going to do that hire. Now, I could be wrong, but I have no recollection that we specifically said the commissioners are going to do this hire.
As per my recollection, you are correct. We voted to, to post it.
Right. Okay, okay.
You're talking about this hire.
Yeah.
I agree. That's why, that's why we're having this meeting.
I say that because I'm disappointed in us that we did not have the foresight or experience or knowledge to say this is how we're going to approach this thing. It wouldn't necessarily be, the issue wasn't who's going to do it. Let's decide who's going to do it so we don't end up where we're at today. That's what I'm frustrated about. And I'm frustrated with myself about that more than anything. Because I know it as things turned out, it was unfair to Brayden and Vernon. It was really in a roundabout way unfair to us. So I just think Commissioner Day and I had an opportunity to visit yesterday. We are absolutely in agreement that communication is everything. And in this case, I think it was everything that caused the heartburn and, and the mix-up and so on and so forth. So I've also visited with both of those gentlemen a little, certainly not to the extent you guys have, but I believe in times of a lack of leadership, somebody's going to fill that void. And I don't begrudge Vernon stepping in and doing that. That's on us. That's not on Vernon. And that's what I told him when I met with him. So I I admonish us for the lack of operating in a leadership role for whatever reason. I just don't think we hit the mark here. Certainly hope we can do better in the future. I have no problem with us stating our positions as individuals. You and I talked about that yesterday, Commissioner Day. I think we do it quite often. I certainly do it. And I tell people, I will support you on this effort if it comes to the commissioners. I think we have a right to do that. It almost goes without saying, I know none of us would ever say, oh, I guarantee you the commissioners will support this. I will never say that. That's not right. But so when Commissioner Day said that I indicated to Vernon that he would support that, I don't have a problem with that. You have a right to do that, just like I would. And so that is certainly not my issue here. That makes sense, or am I rambling?
It does make sense. Um, if I may speak to part of that as well, I think we did have a workshop scheduled for policies and procedures in regards to our personnel policy scheduled before before we all got sick and it got postponed. And I think this is something that needs to be addressed at that time as well, when we do have that meeting reset back up again because that needs to be addressed at that time as well, when we do have that meeting, uh, re-set back up again because as we all have found out through this process right now, the personnel policy is pretty ambiguous on this. And I would, I would certainly support getting the procedures spelled out a little bit better in, in the policy itself. Because historically, we, uh, from my understanding, uh, that the department heads have been able to to hire the people under them in the past and that. But it's not stated in there specifically. And I think that there again, then we would have known when we said we would post the job, we'd have already known who was going to do the hiring. So that is something we need to address moving forward. And I agree with that.
Yeah, I do too. So your motion indicated forty thousand, is that correct?
That is correct.
When you said mid-range, I, I wasn't aware. I missed this last page here. So, and I'm assuming you believe that's fair wage?
Yes, it's, uh, it would, I believe, I just did some quick math this morning, and I believe that it is pretty consistent with the wages that this applicant is receiving at their position where they are previously at. And would, what it would do would give them the out, more hours rather it's, because their position at this point is part-time rather than full-time.
Who's position? I'm, I missed part of that, sorry.
Their, their current position that they have at this time is, I believe, at a
Part-time, yeah.
If you do, if you figure it out, it comes out hourly, uh, approximately the same, I believe.
Yeah, the hourly rate would calculate to be nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents. So I've got a couple of other questions. Good there. So I would direct, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, direct my questions to Vernon and Brayden. Obviously, this is a very unique time and circumstance we're under. Probably never going to get back to where we're at right now. Yeah. So I, I qualify that just as almost an apology to say, good Lord, you know, here's where we're at. But it's where we're at. It's what we have to deal with. So I guess, uh, Vern, my question would be to you. Do you feel, would you recommend, if it was up to you and you alone, would you recommend this hire to the county commissioners?
Yes, sir.
And if it was up to you and you alone, would you hire this individual?
Yes, sir.
And do you feel like it's a fair rate?
Yes, I would not have pursued the, the, this whole process if I didn't feel that, feel yes on all counts.
Correct. And then Mr. Brayden, um, obviously I've made it clear how I felt about you coming in as a new employee. I don't, I don't think that's been a secret. I'm certainly willing to reconsider that. Got your email. Do you believe this would be a good hire? And then more importantly, this is a question I really want to ask you, based on your experience to date, do you feel you could work with this person?
From, yes.
Okay. And I know it's been fairly limited.
Yes.
But that was my number one question. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin, any more comments?
No, sir.
Okay, my only comment, in, in addition to what's been said, is that I think some of the, there is, there was communications confusion, no question about it. And the fact is, uh, in the past, we have not stepped in to hire somebody that is in the department, below the department heads. Actually, I, I haven't helped hire any motor grader operators. I've commented on performance reviews and that kind of thing. But it's, uh, it's something that was confusing because your rights not clearly spelled out in the policies. It's sort of maybe partly tradition or process that was in, in place. And we do need to fix that. Uh, I believe, uh, that, uh, you know, I was good with it going down the path. It was only if, uh, the sheriff was good with that. My understanding there was some confusion on coordinating with, with him. So that has to be, you know, straightened up. Cause I think he didn't get enough notice, is my view. But he's happy, uh, to, to do it. And he was recommending that, uh, she take this job. So I was glad to hear that. So other than that, uh, if there are any comments in the.
I would respond to that. Uh, I had a long conversation.
You had a long.
With the sheriff after his conversation with you, when we traveled to and from a meeting in Canyon City yesterday. Again, we get into this whole thing that Kevin, Commissioner Day was talking about. That we've got to fix some things. I wholeheartedly agree. From my conversation with Shannon Sheriff Byerly, he did not have an issue with notice or anything else. At least I sure didn't get that from him. He, you know, it wasn't a, wasn't an issue. So, uh, you know, applicants mark on their application. Are we free to contact their current employer or not? You know, the quote unquote standard two-week notice, in my opinion, is not applicable here. It's none of our business really anyway. Uh, that would be between applicant and her current employer. So I didn't, I went too hung up about all of that. But didn't have a win a factor for me. So,
okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any comments left out here? Vernon, you good? Brayden? Anybody else? All right, I call for the vote. All in favor of hiring applicant number one at a pay rate of forty thousand bucks a year?
As a full-time?
Full-time employee. Say aye. Tom?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Canada, aye? Good.
Start date.
Immediately was the, we should have put that in there, but that was the understanding because of the urgency of training.
Well, immediately it'd be today. So.
That's right.
Mean that.
Well, that was to be today was what they wanted, but it's going to be Monday now because today is gone. So do you want to get a hold of applicant one and see if that is agreeable? Somebody?
Yes, sir.
You will.
And maybe if I may, sir, to address some issues that were brought up. Clearly, we have a director in this department. And hopefully we will have an assistant director. Commissioner Dan and I spoke at length about micromanaging versus non-micromanaging. And I'd like to talk about that a little bit.
It's in your main.
I have no desire to micromanage HR finance. That's why we hired a director.
Right.
In, in the future, I would think that out of respect, if the director felt like, in this case, Mr. Brayden felt like he needed to hire, fire and hire someone. That's, in my opinion, that's within his realm of his job over there. It would be nice to know that. We've indicated that to other department heads. Hey, hire and fire like you like, but it'd be nice if you just let us know so we know who inhales working for the county and who's not. Still hasn't done a very good job of that. You know, typically I
True.
I don't know. Not that I have to know all the employees by name, but it would be nice as a board of director for the county to be able to know who's on the payroll and who's not. So, I guess, I hope that clarifies some things, uh, moving on forward from here that 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 is a department. Both of those employees work for these commissioners. Were the elected officials they worked for, but we've hired somebody to run that department. So, hopefully we don't get into this deal again. Like, it all comes back to communication, right? I mean, if Brayden would come and say, hey, you guys, I made a decision. I'm going to let my employee go. Okay. Thanks for letting us know. To me, that covers it. And the same with, hey, just wanted to let you guys know, um, I offered a contract to so-and-so today. Just courtesy and, and keeps us from walking into an office and go, oh, and can I help you? No, can I help you? I work here, kind of a deal, you know, it's just awkward. So big communications, ninety percent of it, I really do.
It is. And then I'll make a comment on that since you brought it up. Uh, I agree. We are executives in charge. If we were a one person and you all work for us, it would be expected to, you know, there's going to be reports. You're going to let us know if things are going on. And if you need help, you ask and those kinds of things. I'm not there to tell you how to do the job. So, and that's the same in any company or any state agency or any county. So, uh, we're counting on you, uh, running the show. And if you need help, ask for it, for sure. And I wouldn't get in the middle of hiring and firing unless, uh, and it, unless things got a little screwy. And then we'd say, Brayden, come on in here and let's figure out what, what's going on. That happens in companies too.
Yeah, to clarify one point, uh, Commissioner Day and I talked about it. This whole idea of precedence, uh, versus making decisions on a case-by-case issue. We've heard both here at this table. It's just a point of information, two commissioners were somewhat involved in Jackie's last interview process and hire in her office. Jay sat there and I sat back there with Attorney Smith. Because I know we talked about, you know, well, so-and-so's never asked for, well, true, nor shouldn't they necessarily. But again, it's not spelled out anywhere, right? It goes back, well, how far you want to go back? I'll go back three and a half years. I don't want to go back forty years because I have nothing to do with that. So again, to your point, those kinds of things I think need to be addressed. I just looked at that, we both did yesterday, the personnel policy. I don't think the word transfer is in there. It may be in that one sentence, but I can't remember. I'm not, I'm not going to dig it out now. But, uh, you know, I know Kelly, from her experience over the last sixty-five years, you've worked here. Somewhere in there. Uh, I know that transfers have occurred, correct? Is that a fair statement? The personnel policy does not address that.
And say.
And, and then when we look, when Commissioner Day and I looked at the personnel policy in the first sentence, and that paragraph starts out with normally postings are to be done five days, at least five days prior to hiring or whatever. Well, what a sorry way to start a sentence with the word normally. So I just keep coming back to a lot of, I think, our issues here. If we want to get technical, which we better, if anybody understands what FLSA stands for, the Fair Labor Standards Administration, we better get technical about some things as we move forward. Would those need to be spelled out in that personnel policy? So I'm glad we're moving forward with this. Hopefully we've jumped a big hurdle in the last week in that area. And I'm, I'm excited.
Now I'm looking forward to seeing the conversion go and keeping things on keel here with the whole team, including, uh, Jordan Benson, which is part of processes we've gone on, the help that you're giving and, and, and you and Vernon both volunteering to step up during this hiatus. So thank you. Okay, let's move on because we got a lot of other discussion on personnel policy when we get to the personnel policy workshop. Uh, the next is to consideration of the Justice Center poll. Uh, we've got an election coming up and a poll that needs to occur before that. And a lot of things have occurred since our last Justice Center meeting, which I think was in January sixteen or seventeen. And then a few, uh, discussions on the polling process. And then just to re, yeah, we're good. Just to rehash guys' timeline, we spent some of February on the contract itself in order to straighten out the language in the contract. And then, uh, March hit and we got, uh, into, uh, the COVID issues for the first two weeks. Then we got COVID. So there we are. So let's come back up to speed and let's, uh, let's hear a report from Ann, who's the Justice Center committee person that Shannon has worked on this. So Ann, you're on.
All right.
Speak loudly.
Or do you want me to?
You can stand there and pull the chair out of the way, or you can even sit there if you'd rather.
Okay, so at the February seventeenth, B O C C meeting.
Was it February?
The B O C C approved the agreement with Nate Eckloff of Piper Sandler and John Brits of the Brits Company. The Brits Company is the polling company. And after the approved changes were completed, the agreements were signed. So that's been accomplished. And I've been in contact with Nate and John regarding the timeline necessary for launching this polling survey. And excuse me. Originally, he wanted to do May eighth, and I told him that was just not possible because it didn't allow us any marketing time.
Enough marketing time.
To get the community in, um, an information state. So he agreed to go with March thirteenth, which gives us two weeks of publication in the papers and three weeks in the digital paper.
Two weeks starting next Monday?
April twenty-ninth and May seventh for the Tribune. And April thirtieth and May eighth for the Sentinel. And April twenty-sixth, April thirty-first and May third for the Valley Beat. This isn't the only marketing tools that we're going to use. As I've listed out here, there's the, uh, Custer County website, the social media. I know the Facebook page for the Justice Center has been worked on. I don't know if it's launched yet.
Let's see, uh, Amanda Hunter that's doing.
Yes, Amanda's doing that. Posting flyers and displaying the proposed construction models that are being produced in process by Riley Johnson. So what the committee needs at this time from the B O C C is to give your stamp of approval. I should backtrack. The polling company has presented an initial survey, polling survey, which the committee has reviewed. So to give us the approval to continue to have John Brits and his company execute the approved and signed agreement and continue working with the Justice Committee to finalize and implement that polling survey for launching on May thirteenth.
So you're, you know, in effect, work once, once they need to go ahead and official signature from us, like do it.
Right.
And you'll work, uh, cleaning up that poll with some of the comments and.
Right.
Whatever is necessary.
All of the, uh, committee's comments that have been received are going to be forwarded to John Brits and Nate and for their consideration and working on. But in order to get this on the ballot this year and for them to have time to complicate the results of their poll, we need to get this launched on this date.
Right.
If I may?
Yes.
I was somewhat under the impression that we were as a board needing to side on the poll itself as far as what was, what was on there. But I, I'm understanding you now as saying that the comments are being forwarded to them to go ahead and make the necessary adjustments. Is, is that what I just heard then?
And work with them and the committee.
Correct. And they are the professionals for this. So, we're paying for that expertise, and we need to work with them on that.
I was, I was just trying to clarify exactly what we were needing to do here, because I had been under that other impression. And so, that's, that's why I asked my question.
I think it looks like you.
Yeah, I, I was gonna almost ask the identical question. Remember, it was appropriate, if I may, sir.
Sure, go ahead.
So, you're not going to send a recommendation to Keith Frederick about what you think the poll should say, is what I hear you saying.
You're sending all recommended comments, aren't you?
To Nate?
Yeah. Well, yeah. Keith Frederick's actually the one writing the poll for John.
John.
John Brits.
But I'm just asking. It, it sounds like you're not going to send him a recommendation from your committee. This is what we think the poll should look like or should say, right? I mean, I know you, we got some very pointed comments about that poll. They, if you're going to send those comments on to Frederick, this poll could look exactly like it does today, right? Just because you send them comments doesn't mean they're gonna change anything.
Unless it depends on how, how you send them. And if you ask them to coordinate with it, you need to get a, you know, get their input.
Taking your comments into consideration, that's a definite possibility that we could do, is send the comments with them to send their final version of the poll.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly would think that would be reasonable. I would hate for you to just send them our comments. And next thing you know, May thirteenth rolls around and this poll hits the street.
Right.
And nobody's even seen it. I mean, I think we certainly should see this before it goes out, because this is where the buck's gonna stop, right?
I would agree with that. And in reading all of the different comments to the poll, some of those are conflicting. So, if you send them all to them, well, this one cancels that one.
That's right.
We all, we all know how that works.
Yeah. And. They need to see that, they do need to see that. I agree with you.
And, and that being said, though, it may not look exactly like we think it ought to, even if it's changed.
Right.
As per the comments, my comment to that would be, we, we kinda, we know our community, but we don't know polling. And so, I would have to give them some benefit of the doubt on that poll.
Yeah.
Myself.
No, I would agree. I had this conversation yesterday with Sheriff Byerly, too. And, and it was kind of pointed, because he took exception to some of the comments that were submitted about that poll. And he said, as you just did, they're the professionals, and we're paying them. And my comment was, then by God, we'll get what we want. We're paying the bill, right? If we're paying the bill, we should get a product that we find acceptable.
You're right, Tom, but I'll, I'll counter that. Let's, if you were buying a car and they wanted you to design a car and you told them how to redesign it and it didn't work, we're liable for it. Then we're hiring them for their expertise on how to build that car. All right. So, that means, doesn't mean that they don't take in consideration what we want. We don't want a blue car. We want a yellow one, because we know the community would accept that better. So, so it works both ways. We do need to see the poll. But in the end, they, they have done a lot of these, as they've said, both of us. And I'm not, I'm, I'm advocating the fact that it, that they are the experts. We hire them for their expertise, not for, we could have done it internally all by ourselves if, if we had wanted to, but we didn't. So, I agree, we need to hand, we need to tailor it. We need to make sure they are tweaking it where it's necessary. But, you know, if, otherwise, or.
Well, if they're professionals, they should be able to take what either our recommendation is, which I think's the route we should go, is the committee should recommend.
Yeah.
We recommend you put these changes on your poll. Then the professionalism comes in.
I hear it.
It's their ability to do that and come up with a product that we're willing.
Convince us that if we, the car won't run if we didn't know exactly what you wanted. So, that's part of them being a professional.
Well, I, one thing I see, and I'll comment on, is they may not take all of our recommendations based on their experience. And they could tell us why. We don't know, I'm not gonna even try to say I know polling. And like Commissioner Kevin says, this is, we know our county like the back of our hands. And we've had these major discussions with them that you don't know our county. And we're saying we do, and they say. So, I think we have to go with, they were approved by the BOCC to move with this agreement, to move forward. And we go the next step with your approval, work on it. The thing I would like to do is if we have your approval to do that, that in order to launch by May thirteenth, we, I need to find out a date when they can have a revision to us.
Process you have. So, what do you, we need a letter, from what I understand in your discussions, that they want from us, and we can sign a, a go-ahead.
Yes.
That would include launching it when, and then, and then ensure that we get the coordination on the recommendations that you give them before the poll goes out.
They want a launch date of May thirteenth.
So, that's three weeks away. No, that's four weeks.
And that gives us two to three weeks, actually, you know, two to three weeks to get marketing materials out.
That's a lot of time in the community.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I would move that we authorize the Justice Center Committee to continue to work with Brits and Eckloff and Frederick to meet these dates. And included in my motion would be for the committee to also give recommendations to the polling company as, as to what you think this document should look like based on the input you received from everybody that, that evaluated the poll when we were first given it.
Let me, can I add something to add to that? And at the same time, write a letter, get to work with Nate on what he wants. The Chairman of the Board, or whatever, to, to send to him to say, go. I mean, it's the whole thing that Tom just mentioned, plus.
Correct.
The go.
Yes.
So, we need to send another signed up.
We just need to, he, he asked, I think he asked, when he called me.
They, they are needing.
They want to know that the board is authorized and then to proceed.
Exactly. They need official.
Working with Ann.
Go ahead to execute.
I mean, it's, you already told them to go, but there's no reason why we can't say execute the process with you.
Yeah, the only reason, in my opinion, that we wouldn't say that is because we haven't seen the document.
Well, that's why you need to authorize them to go and open them, so we got it.
And you can put in that letter, if I may, suggest that they'll be working with us and they will present a final draft.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought he asked you. You're gonna work with them with the recommendation.
Yeah. Exactly.
So, why don't you work up that note, whatever it is, for, and we'll authorize that in, in this motion, that I, as the Chairman, can sign it, or we can all three sign it. I don't think that's necessary, but, but get it back to us and, and we'll turn it right around.
Okay.
Second.
I need to have the motion restated.
Okay, good point. We need to restate it, but once a second, so it's a real motion.
So, yeah.
I'll tell you, I'll say to the problem, I'll withdraw my motion. Chairman Kander can introduce a motion if he'd like.
No, I liked your motion, Tom. All of, all we needed was, we're just gonna send that request through the committee and we'll, we'll give them a letter that says, go. Or it could be a separate, separate motion that says, let's, let me sign the letter that authorized, that says they're authorized to proceed to, to work. I don't understand why Nate wants that, but that's why I wanted you to, in Tom's motion, is go work with them, get the recommendations to them, that they want a letter that says, from, from the board, saying, go work. And just be a simple sentence or two, that's what they want.
So, I would, again, move that BOCC authorizes the Justice Center Committee to move forward with working with Brits, Eckloff, and Frederick on the polling schedule that's presented here today. And that we direct the committee to give their recommendations to these guys as to how they think the poll should look. And we can follow up with a, with a letter if we have to.
Okay, you second that with second place, and moved and seconded to authorize the committee to proceed forward as they presented right now on the schedule and work with the polling company. And get their recommendations to them and our, and their proposed poll back to us for reading. Get it, Kevin, twice.
Thanks.
Thanks. Any other discussion?
I have a question for Miss Anne, if I may.
Yes.
Do you have a feel from the committee of their opinion of this poll the way it is right now?
I don't. I have not seen a lot of comments, other than maybe two major ones. So, honestly, I don't.
You're talking about the poll that they wrote, Tom.
Yeah.
Alfred, yeah. Only thing I recall in our discussions was what they kept telling us. This is not as long as some polls we've done. But it is, but it's, and we know what we're doing, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
If you want a personal opinion, I, from what the environment is in our society today, people aren't as friendly towards polling. But I think they're gonna have to test those waters and see. And if they run into a roadblock with it, they're gonna have to change.
Right. And we're not talking just telephone poll, it's the whole poll.
The whole thing.
Online, whatever the, we're doing.
Exactly.
You know, I voiced this, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I voiced this in a Justice Center Committee meeting. If we get a poor, poor response to this survey, I wanna know, we got a poor response to the survey because people did not like the idea.
Yeah.
Not because they hated this survey.
And I do know this about survey taking. They have to write down the reason for not getting a response. So, it could be a hangout call, or the person didn't have time, or, you know. They have to, you're right, Tom, that, you have to document that.
You know, I've said it, there's no way I'd take this poll on the phone. Not because I got anything against the Justice Center, right? It would be because of this poll, and I don't want that to happen. I want to, if this thing goes down in flames, to be able to say that the community didn't want to move forward with the Justice Center, not the community hated this poll. That would be, that would be tragedy. So, that's, that's my big concern with this, that it's a, that it's a friendly designed poll for this community.
The other thing that is friendly about it is you will be able to do it on a write-in or on the internet.
Yeah.
So, one of the information pieces that we will do in the marketing is the multiple ways that they can take this poll. And I think that creates a positive.
Right. And I think upfront, even on the telephone call, they ought to say, you know, this is about the Justice Center. There are multiple ways you can, we've got some questions that you can answer online in person, or block by letting us go through the telephone. That way, it, it opens it up before they just say, I'm gonna start blasting questions at you, you know, make it friendly.
Right.
Yeah, the other thing I don't think we've seen, I could be wrong, is what the total cost of this is gonna be, what we're paying Frederick. We won't pay Frederick, we'll pay Brits, and Brits will pay Frederick. But I don't know. If somebody asked me today, how much does this poll cost? I couldn't even begin to dream up a number.
All we have is the contract value itself.
So, if you get an opportunity and could ask them that.
I will, because I'll be in contact with them.
Yeah.
And.
That's a good point. Part of the process, Brits gets paid, so does our mate and his crew.
Right.
Nate and his crew always said, well, we're doing it for nothing, really, because we're gonna make our money in the end.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, that calls, we'll not get any of this money. This will go to.
Right.
Frederick and.
Yeah.
Which is pretty good, Tom. Oh, and that reminds me of the 3D model. We're good at it.
That is in process right now, and it should be available, because one of the goals is to have that on display throughout the county.
Awful hard to tell.
Particularly the libraries, the polling alley. There's a forum that's gonna happen, and we'll have that at.
Okay.
So, there'll be opportunities for that, I think.
Talk to the newspapers and see if you can get a poll insert. One-page poll, and, and then the back of it's got the address pulled up and mailed in.
And also, one of the thoughts is with the papers, with their digital versions, there'll be links to the poll also.
Like an insert.
Yeah. But there'll be possibly, we'll look at cost of inserts and things like that.
Right.
But there should be a marketing blast that goes out.
Yeah, that would be on our back.
I know we talked about it, too. Would you include the radio station in that list of outlets?
If they will do it.
Well, I'm sure they would, as a public service announcement. Yeah, or we pay them.
Meaning that it would be, there is a poll, the Justice Center's coming up, or would you?
We could do a public announcement if they'll do it for us.
Sure.
And work with Reggie.
Or we can buy it in.
If I may?
Yeah, we can buy it, go ahead, Ken.
One thing, we know what the poll looks like. I just was thinking of that when you said you had your comment, and, and I hadn't thought of it before. When you get contacted on the phone, unless you've seen one of them already out there, you don't know how long that, it was until after you're in the middle of it, so.
Yeah, if you listen to our conversation, you wouldn't have any basis for that if you've not seen that.
You almost know, but I heard, they say you got twenty minutes or you need five.
Right, yeah.
And then my other comment, I think, would be directed at you, Ann, as per this motion. I guess, you realize then that the, the committee needs to have someone, I mean, get together to put together the recommendations to send back at that point to, so that we're, we're not sending them the conflicting. I'm assuming by what, the way that is, is stated, that there needs to be a pretty concise recommendation going back to.
Yeah, and you're not, yeah.
You read my mind, because I will be the one doing that. And so, what I've already started is going through all the emails and pulling them all out, and then we'll present them one less.
That's good, because otherwise, because in my reading of the comments, some of them are conflicting, like, and I, so you have a consensus on some of the things.
Now, one question would be is, do you want me to solicit more comments or just go with what we have?
We've gone through that.
Okay.
You know.
I was out of pocket for several weeks.
Specifically, and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Day. I did not include in my motion, send them a list. I'm not interested in them getting a list. I'm interested in the committee. Here's our recommendations for the poll. Change A, change D, change F, change I, whatever it is. That's the motion, we can fail it if we want, but that was my intent, that we don't give them, that here's the comments we got back. No, we digested the comments, and here's our recommendations to change.
These are recommendations, and then they, if they have some modifications or they don't wanna use them, they, they just.
Yeah, I mean, the recommendation.
Right.
Their recommendation, and they can do what they gotta do, and then professionally say, here's one.
So, Commissioner Tom, that's the understanding I had.
All right.
So, that's what I, in my mindset, to do.
And if you're set to go through the list and come up with recommendations, I'm all in, perfect. And, and if Byerly has authorized you to deal with that, perfect. If not, you may have to convene another meeting, but whatever.
Sheriff Byerly has asked me to be in charge of this part.
And I'm fine with that. And I'm fine with that. I just, again, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I'd rather see this committee tell them, this is what we want. This is our recommendations to you. This is what we want in that poll. Whether it gets in there or not, I can live with that.
That's what it is, it's the process. How do you make the car? Make meet what you, the customer, want.
And I promise you that I will be in contact with them first thing on Monday, and I'll probably send them out my email sometime this weekend. With the recommendations. And then we'll have our talk.
It could be cumbersome, if you gotta convene another meeting and try to get everybody on the same day, next thing, no, ten days, bam bam. Schedule goes out the window.
Get whatever statement he wants a signature on. If that, yeah, we can do that anytime.
That would be appreciated, cuz I know they will ask to see.
It's all gonna need is a quick, I mean, it's easy.
That would be a great time to ask them how much it's gonna cost us, cuz I don't know that.
When we're looking at the timeline, just a reminder that for this to get on the ballot, it's August third. I'm putting you on the spot.
So the. Come up with a resolution. I mean, really.
That's the drop dead date, right?
I have to have certification September. Third or fourth.
So we need time to work a bit.
Her final date, if you back that up, we have to be working on this the first part of July. Is what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, at least.
That's why I was on the agenda for this.
I know, that's why we had this special meeting, Watson and I. Kevin, you had something?
Yes, I did. In regards to the signature on the letter, is it? A signature, or is it all three signatures? We didn't.
Didn't say, I'm good with.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and you know what, I just looked it up here. Frederick Polls will be contracted by Custer County to work on behalf of the county to conduct the above-mentioned survey. Frederick Polls will be paid a fifteen thousand dollars. In, in two installments. The first is due on the agreement of seventy-five hundred, the second is due upon November of the poll, so I just.
I knew we paid him half. Okay, any other comments, any comments publicly? Anybody lighten up? No other questions, call for the, all in favor of the motion. As stated. You're on your own now.
Thank you.
Will you send me Frederick's email and his information?
Yes, let me see, I've got it right here. It really goes to Brits.
Okay, to John Brits, okay.
That's who we.
If I get it, let me see.
Remember, Anne, and you weren't know, but they had to segregate the two to, as separate contracts legally. And so we're paying them directly, that's why we paid seventy-five hundred dollars to Brits already.
Yeah, I'll forward this to you, and I'm sure you've got it, but.
Was in your motion, is that a person or a company?
Frederick, B C forward slash Frederick's Polling is the company that's actually doing the poll.
Brits is in their name somewhere. John Brits is the guy that does. So I think it's like a lawyer, you know, Brits, Frederick and the sons. Alright, good. Okay, that, that's the last agenda item. We have, are there any additional items we need to discuss?
Oh, I do have one. It's, I've asked Kelly to put it on the agenda. We got an email the other day from CCI outlining where we're headed with this. It's called State and Local. The Finance. Act that's coming out of. The one point nine trillion dollar COVID relief fund. We need to get up to speed on that. We don't have to do it today, that's why I put it on the agenda for the fourth. I think we're gonna have to assign somebody to take the lead on this. Got notice today, obviously, we have a Dunn's number. Our SAM. Contract was set to expire in May. The federal government has extended all of those contracts until October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Because they're getting slammed now with people trying to get a Dunn's number and a SAM number and a Cage number. So that they can be eligible to receive these federal treasury dollars. Yeah, there's, there's really four avenues to that. The state. Can apply for that money, they're eligible for that money, municipalities, cities and municipalities and counties.
We already have a discussion and consideration of that, so we can talk about.
Yeah, so I'd like to have an, an intelligent conversation about that, and I couldn't have it right now, cuz I haven't read everything. I've tried to skim through it to get an idea, but I would encourage us all to digest that.
And that came directly.
Forward, so.
Yes, I did see that email. And I was. I guess I didn't have that on this, list of stuff I was gonna ask about.
So no, but we're covered on the Dunn's number. When you read about that, we've already got it, and when you read about the Sams, we've already got that. So, and both of those numbers are in that notebook right back there behind Sheriff and Canada, so. That what says, B O C C Chair. The Dunn's and SAM number are on there. The thing we do not have is that Cage number, we'll have to get that when we go through the process, so. And then there's some other stuff, but those are the three biggies, and those could take anywhere from three to six weeks to get, but we've already got two of those three, so. Yeah, yeah, just, I don't know, four or five weeks ago, we were all been over that now, it was.
Remember the second incident?
Before the end of the year. We had to have a Dunn's number, nobody could track down a Dunn's number for our county. Well, as it turns out, when I went through the whole process, we had. The one that they were getting ready to give me would have been our third. We already have two Dunn's numbers, but they were.
Really, why?
And one was for commissioners, but nobody could find those, there was no record.
They get Dunn's numbers for the school system?
If they accept federal grant money, they'd have to have one, you know, I don't know. So we've got them. Anyway, just wanted to throw that out, so we could be, that's on our, we need to be on our radar. We really need to have all that done. Probably no later than mid-May. The letter says, as soon as possible.
Solid wanting is the number.
And then we're, no, there, there's seven or eight things on there that they want, but. Those were the things that were gonna take us a while to get, if we didn't already have them. And then the guidance documents are supposed to be coming out next week about what that money could be used for. I talked with CCI about that last week, and, and I think I could look it up. I believe it was nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars the county scheduled to get, and then subsequent to that list coming out. U S Treasury said they're also gonna release some PILT money to go on top of this, so. Birdman thought we'd be over a million dollars. And it has to be spent on COVID.
Yeah, and I.
Now we're gonna do that.
I had a meeting with nine-one-one, and Buck was there yesterday, and I visited with him some on that as well.
He talked to Fremont County guys, or in his, and he had them, mayors and commissioners get together and talk about this. He was pretty up to speed on.
But he, he did tell me, and I forwarded that information to Braden. I think this morning. As far as that goes, is that. Buck was under the impression that the first part of that money would be coming to us in the very near future.
Yeah, but we won't get it if we don't jump through these hoops. And the beauty of that is, the cities and municipalities are on their own, we don't have anything to do with them, but. And it is gonna come in two payments, we won't get that money all at once. Don't have any idea about the timing of that, but.
And he had said that who, where and why on it is yet to be determined too, as well as, as far as the use of.
Yeah, yeah, CCI said that document, we should get it next week, so. That's what it's gonna really boil down to. The documents I've read, it basically said it had to do with. It had to be spent on COVID education, COVID prevention, and then COVID. Something else, recovery, so it's. We just have to wait and see, can we get those guidelines? It's a lot of money. To be restricted to COVID, when I had a conversation with Extension Agent today. If the general attitude is, we're on the downhill side of this COVID thing.
It'll be hard.
It could be a challenge, but.
Be a big challenge, unless you're allowed to, I don't know.
You don't get it. It's not on a reimbursable basis, but you have to. Document it, so there's some ideas floating around, and we can talk about those.
Recovery, you know, the businesses or something.
A lot of it will depend on the guidelines.
I was looking around, you know, we've lost a couple of businesses since COVID started. Couple of restaurants. Repair shop.
There's also a lot of small mom and pop little stores that, you know, maybe at their home or other places that have gone off too. You don't see them, they're not visible.
Any other things?
I had a couple yet to add. I'll try to be quick. I did get my registration made for the summer conference for CCI.
Is it gonna be in person or both?
It's blended. I'm going in person. You just make the contacts and. Connection so much better in person than you do. By zooming in. That's gonna take place.
Hotel Agante, is that where?
It's actually, it's actually.
Well, that's better, maybe.
But anyhow, I did get my registration for that. I, I think you guys knew I was going to do that, so I.
Date of that conference, you have it written down there?
The seventh, eighth and ninth, so it'd be the afternoon of the seventh.
Yeah, Commissioner Ken and I both attended that in our first, well, I think we've gone. Twenty years it was available, which twice, like last year got canceled, but. I worry that's money well spent is, you know, you have to, from my experience as a new commissioner, you have to kind of butt in. Elbow somebody to get their attention, but they always seem to be appreciative when they find out you're a new commissioner, and you're trying to meet people, and so.
You know, to twist everybody's arm from broadband to roads and bridges. Stay out of that now, I know you're gonna go there right off the bat, but if you do, bring home a half.
Well, I was gonna say, it'd be, it'd be nice if we had some confidence that you'd go to something besides. But I don't know.
You know, I, I probably had that in mind, since I'm, you know, I, I still have a heart for.
I can see him sitting in a low housing.
I will have Gator there to help guide me to which ones I need to attend.
You know, they do a good job, the food's great, and there's. Not a lot of free time, but. Depends on where they end up housing you, you know, typically, it should be within walking distance of that conference center.
Say, was it there?
It's nice.
Another thing, I did visit with Tina. Yesterday afternoon, when, for a few minutes, she called me. Seemed to be, she's sounding better every time I hear her. She is still, when she gets up, moves around, her oxygen's still diving into the eighties. And taking a while to come back. So she has an upcoming doctor's appointment before possibly being able to be released, but she did sound pretty decent, a lot better than the last time I spoke to her.
Four days, five days ago.
Just, you know, good, good news on that, and. Then I had a question. In regard, that email in regards to this federal and state funds coming. Brought back to mind the, the receipts from the last CARES Act. That did we ever get those resubmitted when they extended the time on that?
No, I thought that'd be one of our first. Attempts. Thirty-two thousand dollars would be through this.
Through this one, and because I, I knew they had a, they had extended the other one, but I think we ended up finding out that it wasn't. Able to do it or something, so, you know, so I just brought to mind that, so I just thought I'd bring that back to.
Don't forget that, you know, keep pecking away at that, cuz we don't want that to fall through the cracks. The question will be, will they allow? Prior expenses to be covered with this round, that'd be the big question.
Well, it would be nice. If not. That's the way it is, but it would be, that would be something we would need to check on, so I just thought I'd throw that out there. That's all I have.
Okay, I have an update on Tina too. I'm glad you brought it up. She was, I talked to her last night. And the reason was she, first of all, she wanted to listen, same thing we did. She was coughing, but not a lot as much as she did the last time. And didn't say the same things, but she was hoping, and I got, I made arrangements, Jordan worked it. We got a tablet for her to take out. I've got Rich, her husband's coming in today. Did he come in yet? No, yeah, I couldn't, we had a tablet that we had, that Kara took home with her. Updated that, got her stuff on, so she can actually, she wants to do whatever she can, she wants to stay engaged. She said if we have to, she ordered. Work on agendas or anything for us that we, that she can do from home. And she said to me that she, her doctor ain't gonna let her out until the twenty-seventh. She's gotta come back, because she's gotta get over that problem of getting up and losing the air. And before she'll get authorized to come back to work, so we won't know until the end of the month. Yeah, she probably told you this.
She did, and I had not, she did ask about a laptop or something to, it, so she could do some from home. And I forgot to write that down, and so I forgot to mention it, so I'm glad you did.
I got it, and I got, and Jordan made it happen.
Good.
Alright, and then a fun thing that's going on, you remember the committee, Tom, I don't think Kevin was around, that came out and they. Dedicated a plaque and historical stuff onto the basic line. They're on the move again, and we're gonna be asked to support it, Custer City. You're familiar with Custer City, everybody probably is, came alive for two years and died and went away, and all that's left is a. Face where Custer's statue stood. So they're, they're gonna get the, they got a picture of that statue, I couldn't believe mine, so. From the old newspaper, and they're gonna try to get the money together and get a plaque and a statue, and put old Custer back out there on guard. And we'll see how long that lasts in this woke world. So we'll, we're gonna be seeing Custer here in the near future, not too, too distant future, probably taking a while, but I'm surprised they're. Getting as far as they're, and what's left are three concrete pedestals, or two. There was actually a third one that he actually stood on, and it's gone, so they're gonna have to. Resurrect that and come up with a, not a bronze statue, they said, but it'll be a light, this is some kind.
Question for Commissioner Day, do you know why the ditch witch is sitting down there? Or they look like water lines laid out, or do you know what's going on there?
As a matter of fact, I do. That gentleman actually approached me first, and I put him in touch with the Roden Bridge and Kurt. That is Nathaniel Brown. They have probably half of the right to that string that's on the Lone Pine property. We have a, we have a partial right to it, the piece that's between our property and the community. The county, when we bought the. The Lone Pine property, that water right went with it.
The small ditch witch.
Yeah, but then there, the piece of ground between our property and the community building has a. Uh, yeah, but then uh there, the piece of ground between our property and the community building has a I'm gonna just throw numbers, but they're, they're not right. I'm gonna say we have like a quarter right. They have a quarter right on that piece. And then he's got a half right to that. And I think he, in talking to him, there's so, it's so many gallons.
Where's he taking that?
Uh it's going across the road to uh, you remember Edna Branstein? Uh it's the White House that sits past the old station there. Uh and that's. Yes, and that's where that's going. There were two lines already across there. One has failed some years back and they was using the secondary line and it is now failing and so he's running that new water line.
So they're gonna bore under the highway?
Uh he's going under the bridge.
Okay.
Uh so around and that's the, that's the way it's went in the past. He did have to cut the road.
So is that a well?
It's a spring. They're developed springs, so it's got a.
Box.
Oh, yeah, but.
Sister.
And we haven't used, the county hasn't used that water since we've had the property, although it is available for us to use on that property.
I wonder if the abandoned water rights rules come into play with that, if we don't use it.
I don't think so.
Probably, uh not sure on that. Uh I know the spring's been getting used, but not by all the, not by all the, the water.
And maybe it only needs to be used. I'll talk to Jerry about that and see, cause if we need to use it, we ought to.
So we can throw a pump in it and pump a little bit.
Do something, document that we do.
Water grass.
Better than aluminum.
Just community center. Put grass in there.
Maybe it'll, maybe it'll get rid of the goat heads. So that's what that is and uh he ran into more rock and problems. He was hoping to have it in and out. Yeah, and you know how those drops go. So that's why that's still sitting there.
Okay, just because we had a meeting doesn't mean we have to keep doing it. And you guys have any questions out there? Any other comments you wanna? More time. How about you, Clint? You've been awful quiet. We didn't even get comments from you today.
Oh, I do have a question for you and Tom, which isn't related to any of this.
That's okay.
This has to do with Dr. Brown again, but you know, Jay had commissioned privately an investigation. And Donna said that we paid him for that and we should have that somewhere. Do either of you know where that is, that file?
Yeah, that's a great point. Uh we had that file here. But then I think he ended up taking it back out of here because he didn't think it needed to just be sitting around here in an open.
I know who he commissioned. I can ask maybe he has a copy.
Right, we've. I'd like to see it for, you know, legal reasons.
Right, I think we're well within our rights to request that from him.
Yeah.
It'd be different if we hadn't reimbursed him for that, but we did.
Yeah, and I, Kelly doesn't know where it is and unless it's saved.
His telephone number is probably still alive and I've called anyway.
Well, I talk to him every once in a while. I can share answers.
Okay, one of you would check with him to find out if he's got it or, you know, if we can get a copy from.
Yeah, I don't think he left it here.
Okay.
I think I remember him carrying it.
I think that may be useful um for some things I'm still handling on that.
It's up to you. You wanna call him?
I'll call him. I'll talk to Dave for a while.
Alright.
We'll, we'll call him, needle him a little bit.
Is he down there in the beach in Belize?
Yeah, yeah, I wonder. He may be. Maybe he's out of commission right now.
Yeah, no, he's still in Austin.
Alright, any other comments? You've done, Clint? That was an awful long dissertation.
Um, no, that was it. I sent some things for the short term rental um workshop we're gonna have next week and um that's, that's all I've got right now.
And I sent you a couple of things on the, you re, you corrected the editorial, I guess, uh to.
The letter to the editor.
And he's still raising his head on.
Yeah, I'm. Because I think.
He's way out of bounds.
I think there may, should be maybe a follow-up letter since he's already responded to yours. Says, that's why I wanted to see that.
Okay.
We're good. If we can get it.
And I sent you an email this afternoon about that uh preamble.
Yeah.
Did you see that?
I did, I saw that.
Okay. Just a typo. Yeah, I'd suggest we all write down our recommendations for that before we get to that workshop. I think it'd speed things up if we all just said, okay, here's what I think. Instead of, I know Vic talked about maybe we should go through it line by line again and there may be some value to that. I don't know.
Me and Vic, you know, a little.
Well, yeah, at the workshop.
Yeah. Well, it's getting shorter, so. Okay, any other things? Uh let's hear a motion to adjourn.
I move with adjourned.
Got a second.
Not for me.
I'll second. All favors aye, Tom.
Aye.